Spring Board Education meeting for March 23rd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Anderson?
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Palage?
Here.
So, do you want to take over with the pledge?
Sure, board president, members of the board. So, we have kind of a unique pledge of allegiance here this evening. With us is Melissa Kelly and some juniors and seniors from Springville High School, ASL students, Level Two, who are going to be signing the pledge for us this evening. So, go ahead.
Our pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which states its laws and by America in the business, to the great nation and general, or other.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, yeah? You guys are Level Two, is that what you're hearing?
Yeah.
So, this is your second semester, second year, I think?
Second semester.
Second semester. What path would you go into taking this instead of traditional, like, anything else? I'm sorry, French or Spanish? So, you know somebody, do a lot of you know somebody that? Besides, you have family lines, what is it, trying to show your skill when you graduate? That'll be very helpful from a career perspective.
Yep.
It's a different, thank you guys.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Move on to 1.2 adoption of today's student. Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
1.3 approval of February 23rd, 2022. Do you have a sort of motion?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Palage?
Yes.
State representative. Moving on, 2.1 public participation, Spring Row Education Association. Do you have anything? Nope? 2.2 Spring Row classified. 2.3 public participation prearrangement. Is there 2.4 any public participation on any of your agenda items? Moving on to convene for the work session. As we go over this, public participation, at the end of each of the items, questions can be asked. Answers will hopefully give to the. All right, so we're at 1.3. Question of the assistant principal's calendar. Probably should have been longer than that, but just wanted to bring your attention. We just started the beginning part of this, but there's a bit of a problem, I think, in the administrative salary schedule. In particular, where you start talking about the assistant principals, case six. Right now, they're on 185-day contracts. Now, this isn't something you guys did. This happened quite some time ago. Don't know, wasn't here, don't know the rationale for it. But 185 days is a school year, okay? Principals can't work, assistant principals can't work on 185 days. But in fact, the hell, we've been doing extended contracts for them or supplemental for them, yes. So, I think that it's probably, and again, being, although I wasn't an elementary principal, I was a high school principal and assistant principal. Probably the sweet spot is somewhere around 200 days, 205. And so, we just had kind of had that conversation, how to eliminate, you know, the extended contracts, doing those, so I'd like to bring that back a little bit more detail. See if we could find where that is best served for that group of people in just that salary schedule. I just wanted to put that on the radar. I know even some of them had anywhere from five to 10 days, seven days. But we've got assistants coming in on their own time, too. And we've got great people, there's no doubt, but it can't be without me, so. It's just, can't fix every issue, but there are some that we can, and we just keep trying to make the better scenario for all people, so. It may lie on 200, it may lie on 205. But it's, we have, like, we're going to have some of that today. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
Any questions?
So, what's the junior and senior high's assistant principal, is he there already?
220s.
It's kind of slightly lower. Maybe lower, sir?
Maybe, basically, it'll be lower.
Lower than juniors, okay.
Do we have the junior and junior high in high school because, like, scheduling and that type of thing? That's why they're at those 220s?
Yeah, a lot more activities, scheduling. Yes, exactly.
Well, when I look at it.
Obviously, you only get more of the, more intense, the, you know, scheduling and supervision. All that stuff is the preparations. That's the rationale.
And just thinking about what some of the elementaries are doing now, like grades four or five are doing, some of that scheduling that really, when I look at it, looks like our junior high scheduling. So, to me, this is a very fair, I don't think that we're doing them justice by not providing them the extra days because there's absolutely no way they, they do not put in a lot of time to make those work with those altered schedules. And even not just the 75 points, but I think there's a lot that does go into the summer. So, I personally support that. I think that we need to pay them when they're here for the, they already put in above and beyond, but I think there's probably way more days that they put in that were not funded this last year. And we need to make that right for the coming summer.
So, are we talking about, I just pulled up the salary schedule, just so I'm clear, are we adding a new class or are we just adjusting the one class so that it's higher? Is that? Because I noticed we have two sort of columns for assistant principals.
Right, and that's been out there on the list since we created the salary schedule years ago. We've been having this conversation for years, we've been building the means possible to, you know. So, that 220 was where, in the event that we had removed all of the assistant principals, which is down four of those, 220, four elementary. We would move all of them from that 185-day column to the 220. We're thinking 220 might be a little bit much, so we might lower that down to like the 200 to 205 range. And then in that, in that's the case, we have to play with that column.
Yeah, so you'll change that class by, not something less than.
So, what, what impact would that have on our five-year forecast for the four that this would have had?
It's going to be around 10,000 to 15,000 total between salary and benefits, depending on the plan, at 200 days or 205. So, it's a very small impact.
Yeah. Absolutely, okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to 3.3, Mr. Hook, do you have a question? Yes, and talking with Kyle, you know, we talked, obviously, all of our principals, and I talked quite a bit. Kyle had said something, had actually approached me in the fall and said that we just, you know, need more help. So, my response is, make a proposal, tell me what you're talking, thinking about. So, this is not a new concept, as a matter of fact. I'll, and I'll let him talk about that, but the idea, he came with me and talked to me about the idea of a dean of students, which a lot of schools have, a lot of schools don't. Everybody kind of has their own way of doing it. It did get a little bit of a spreadsheet. Those are just similar school districts that are size-wise, Division One-type schools in just our immediate area. They're just ranked order by the size of the high school. It's just to give you an idea that it's not, what we're talking about is not out of line by any, any stretch of the imagination. But, but anyway, this person would be more of a, well, they need the help. I tell you what, I've been, you've been at this high school, if you know what these people do and watch it, it's like drinking out of a fire hose every day, you know? And it's not just COVID, although COVID has exacerbated the whole issue. But, you know, they need some support, they need some help. We've been talking a lot about the strategic plan and PBIS, our positive behavior intervention support systems, and some of the things that we need to do there at the secondary level, which we really haven't had a chance to even do. And so, this person, one of the many responsibilities, would be kind of the oversight and collaboration with, with that program. Because part of that also becomes, you know, we need some time to look at, you know, PBIS provides restorative practices. You know, sometimes we don't have the time to do anything or to look for ways to deal with discipline issues that may be outside of just the way we normally do it. But because you're just babbling for every minute of the day while you have the kids there, you know? And some of the stuff, and I'll let, I'll let Kyle talk to that in a sec, but it just gets pushed to the back room, you know? Another big thing that's hitting us is workforce development. Like it or not, I know not every kid is going to go to college. Or not every kid's going to go and graduate from college. There are a lot of kids that don't, and we've got to do a better job of taking care of those kids, giving those kids options that are needed as well. We're, we've been kind of dabbling in it. It's really getting pushed hard from the state. There's some money involved, but there's not a cohesive kind of thing that's going on with that. I know the Career Center does their thing, and then I have, you've got St. Clair that's really got a good on our, in the workforce development world. And we've got the Montgomery County Consortium that we're a part of, the Business Advisory Council that we're tapping a bit. We're starting to get there, but we need to really, that oversight and collaboration and pulling those, those pieces together. But that along with just the number of things that they supervise here, you know, it's just critical, I think, to, to move forward with getting some more help with the high school. And I think this is a, a great opportunity and a lot of stock, Kyle, here is.
You're here. See, I'm back here.
I know you've got basketball here a little bit, so, but I'm sure I'm missing it.
No, yeah, I think Mr. Hook talked a lot about it. I think the job description is, is well done, it's very detailed, it's kind of what we're looking for. Take some other pieces and just some things that we kind of talked about here for a few years, just some challenges of getting through some of the important things we have to do also with our student attendance. You know, all of our students, it's very good. We have a lot of tardy situations and unexcused tardy situations that we have to address and have a lot of needs to conversation with parents about. Some of those things start coming in and then really trying to juggle that. But all the other duties that our assistant principals are doing, as well as evaluations of being in the coordinators we need to be in, when we have 2,000 kids in the building, I think those are a lot of things that this will do that will really help a lot. So, that's kind of some, some other details of things that kind of come with it. Preferably, even with the dean of students job, I would just rather have some type of experience with that, because I'll be in that position. I think, you know, Mr. Hook talked a lot about, you know, helping and really leading in order to like collaborate with our PBIS and the county of just getting started, going here this year is a big part of that. And as he talked about, too, just there's a lot of push from the state with a lot of workforce development. What does that look like? We have some people reaching out as far as just some partnerships with that, just having somebody really overseeing that, piece of it. Because we have students that would really benefit from some, some program like that, that may end up going to Career Center because we have students that maybe should be in work managers that don't go there. I think that would be another important piece of this as well. So, I mean, it's really going to be something that's really helping a lot of different areas. You know, supervision is another one, but a lot of times we talk supervision, we're talking about the, we're talking actors. You know, we, I talked with Mr. Hook a little bit about, we have kids kind of all over the place. We're putting a mark in the staff, marking outside, the junior high, the department, the ed unit. So, we have a lot of coordinators there that we need to make sure they hit that, would fall under this responsibility as well. So, I think we get a lot of different areas for here, just the number of kids we have.
That's just, yeah, that's just kind of the Cliff Coast version. Again, we're, we're, we're not going to vote on it, but I, I would imagine that this is also going to lie in the 200, 205 range. Not that it's not, it's important as an assistant, but I think that it's, I think it fits what we're looking for. And it's not, and it's a nice entry point, you know? I think it would be a pretty, I don't know how long a person stays in that role, you know, I just don't know. There's, like I said, there's a lot of schools that use those. You already posted, you haven't posted. Well, yeah, sure.
So, I have some questions. First off, you know, we've brought different positions in before, and one question that I've had when, when I saw it on the agenda and when I was reviewing it, is like when we hired the additional administrator at SI, that was something that we had been talking about as a board for quite some time and talking through the pros. And that's why I definitely think it took a couple of years from when it was first brought to us. And I have not heard in any of the seven years I've been on the board of this being a need that we're, I mean, I, PBIS, I mention it almost every board meeting. I know that that is something that we need to do better, especially in the junior high and high school. But I have not heard that the reason that's not happening is because of staffing. I think that it's a matter, my understanding was it's more so just the prioritization of, with the people that are currently in place. So, I'm a little bit concerned with how this came up so quickly and we hadn't heard of this need before.
My, I mean, just my own recollection, because I know we talked about some of it before your time, I don't know this year. I remember there being some sort of conversation, although I don't remember the specifics. When we added, I think it was probably when we added the fresh principal position. How long have we had that? Do you have a little bit of a word? I'd say six, six years or so. I don't know, I just, I seem to remember there being some conversation. I grab everything recently, I'm just saying, I do think at that time, because I'm looking out back at like the other schools here, and I seem to recall that we were really light on like an admin to student ratio. And I guess if I look at this, because this one that you provided, Mr. Hook, right? This is if we were to add it, right?
I'm right, yeah, I had.
Right, so right now, we're sitting at four, which is sort of below all these other ones. I'm just saying, I do recall a conversation like a while back, but again, it's been a number of years. But I don't remember the specifics of, right, right? I thought it would maybe lighter, and I guess this would seem to indicate that we were still kind of on the light end, you know, compared to sort of comparable, comparatively sized districts.
I think the thing, though, that I'm not, I'm not clear in some of the data when I was asking that was also provided is we have a decent number of students that go to the Career Center and do CCP. So, when we look at that as a whole, and then I look at the number of, like, five points has 525 kids per administrator.
Well, that's my reaction to looking at that, so I just, I think we have problems at work, just high school.
Yeah, I don't know if you need one, but if we were to put money into one, I'm looking at our other. If I were at another building and looking at how many children per administrator, I just feel like this is not where the need is. I feel like some of the things that were brought up, I, I agree that it's, you know, it's always would be helpful to have extra people. But when I look at the data behind it and I think about if we were, this would be adding close to a half million dollars over a five-year. I personally, with what I, the research I did off of what you all provided, I don't see the need at the high school. I would rather see some of those things, just some restructuring with what is there.
Well, I'll give just my two cents. Speaking as a former assistant principal, high school principal, I don't think you're comparing apples to oranges in terms of the amount of coverage and the amount of after-school activities that are involved between a high school and an elementary. Now, I'm not saying we couldn't use more help, maybe certainly at five points is, is getting full. But there's really the level, and the level of need. I would, I would argue that the high school is very much, is very much needed now. Why you haven't heard about it, I don't know. I think Kyle's been talking about it according to PM, you know, before I was here. So, I know that it's not been something that's just brand new. Now, it's been fairly, it's new for me since I've been here, but we've been kind of in COVID hell for the last couple of years. And then, knock on wood, you know, operate it and get out of this thing. You actually can start to think a little bit about what do we really need, what, what helps us become better? So, that's, that's kind of where I lie on it.
There's a couple of things where you were talking about PBIS and it providing restorative practices. You know, I guess I, I see our younger grades because I, I've heard about it, it being done at our younger, at our younger grades. So, that's where when I think, do we need to do it? By law, we do, but I just think that that's where we need to look at it differently. And we do pay our administrators differently because it's insane the amount of things when I see Kyle pop up in Twitter. I'm like, how can one person be that? So, I get it, he is everywhere, he's everywhere. So, I'm not saying that the principals don't do a lot of after-school. I'm not, not saying that at all, he, and the other principals too, absolutely. But I think with some of these things, that workforce development, as the world changes and, and what we need to do for our students change, it's not always adding extra staff. Because if we take a half million dollars that wasn't in the strategic goals, then in our five-year forecast, we're taking that away from something we were going to do with our kids. And I just struggle with, with what's in there that we couldn't potentially restructure to keep that half million in to support our strategic plan and just look differently at a structure that we currently have so that we can look at the workforce development in PBIS. It all, it's, well, PBIS it all, it's workforce development.
Are you outside the box of, is there any way that if we bring on this position, that that person can help in some of these other areas? I mean, I'm under just at the high school. Oh, well, I'd have to see how, I'd have to see, see how fast he can drive around it. Or ski, I don't know. I wouldn't do it immediately, I guess, make sure that we have it rolling well, so. I think there's going to be an awful lot that's going down the pipe here. You know, we just have, we just don't get the opportunity yet, you know? It's easy, you know, it's, it's one thing to be a manager, it's another thing to be an instructional leader. You know, if all you're doing is putting out fires that you're managing, that doesn't mean it's not important because it is. But there's another level, and I think sometimes that we get so bogged down into the, just the stuff of the day that, that we don't get our building administrators to become better instructional leaders. So, I, I think there's, there's pieces that can really help us. We're, we're dealing with seals that are coming up and down the, coming down the pipe at us. That's not as simple as putting a sticker on it. That's a whole other layer, which we don't have time to discuss, but I know Andrew has been dealing with that a little bit. And it's, it's, there's some interesting changes coming at us, though, and it gets us at the high school hard. It's going to impact everywhere else, but obviously, that's where the, the terminate's at, so.
So, I'm, I'm not opposed to this, I think, typically when folks have come to ask for incremental positions, it's come from. But I think to miss Matt's point, I think what, what I'm missing is the job description is very helpful, but it would also help me see, or what would be helpful, would be to see what's coming off of your assistant's plates? And then potentially, based on what you're saying, what is, what we're clearing the space for, if you will, on their, on their dance card to do, you know, or add value to the district? But right now, they're, they're doing this stuff that's, you know, that's the, all this stuff, it's like there's a lot. That, that would help me kind of better visualize, okay, to your point, it's, it would be kind of like a restructuring, right? I'm assuming we're kind of pulling stuff off of different people's plates? And then that clears some capacity for each one of, one of those folks, I'm assuming at the assistant principal. And therefore, we're going to replace that capacity with educational stuff instead of disciplinary and that, that stuff. So, that, that's, that would get me there, but.
If I could just piggyback on, to the extent that I think it would be helpful to have that conversation in the context of our strategic plan, or checking it over. Because I'm guessing that maybe some of those things that are on the list, right, that are, we're talking about, these. This is picking up, I'm imagining are probably tied to things on the strategic plan. on the strategic plan, because I think the Ms. Bass's point is a good one, right, that it's a trade-off, right? We're doing this, it needs to change something else, and you've seen this realistically with things we're thinking about executing in the strategic plan, I mean, that may help. If we can see the full picture as opposed to just a piece of it, then that may tie some of this together.
So we still go back to our numbers that we, that we asked for, and we look at if we were going to support an administrator, this would take us down to, if we were using FTE at the high school, if we had this here, this would take us down to 364.25 students per administrator, and we've got 525 at five points.
It still seems like that's another issue, I mean, this is, if I'm reading this correctly, the high school is still one of the highest of, out of five points, right? Yes, Clear Creek is a little bit higher, I mean, I think you're right, that, it seems like we also have an issue with five points. I guess I don't know, for me, that that becomes like we don't solve this issue, like maybe there's another issue that is going to be solved at five points as well. But I think this is the, if I'm reading, if I'm using the FTEs, the high school is, yes, it would come down, because you're adding an FTE to it, but I think as it stands right now, it's, it's, right, it's higher than junior high, it's higher than SI, higher than Dennis.
Well, junior high is 471.
The, well, you're comparing apples to oranges, that if you use FTEs, that's 448, and if you use FTEs at the high school, it's 45.
Yeah, 448, yeah, sorry.
So, yeah, so, I'll, I'm just, I, I think you're right, that we have other, we have a list of other things as well, that's what I'm saying, right?
It's kind of a little bit of a whack-a-wall, but I'm trying not to, trying to bite off too many, and.
But it's seeing kind of all the others, because I know that with the kids and their extracurricular activities and those sorts of things, I mean, I would imagine that it's more administrative for the high school, but that's what I think.
And there's some other places too, I mean, we have to have some serious discussion on what we see the, the future really looking like structurally, six grade down. I mean, what, what's, what are you written down? That's a whole other discussion, I get it, but it does kind of fit in a little bit.
It does not.
You can see how it, it, it's a, we probably have to have some serious, we're actually waiting on some new enrollment projections, so I think once we see those, we'll have, again, a bit of a snapshot, maybe. Because I think that's, nothing is a problem in isolation, it's, it's always tied to something, I think there's another conversation there, that probably does get to it, where we see this at Wendy's, I mean, it's not like, don't get me wrong, it's not like it's doing tomorrow, but it's, it's in the relatively near future, as long as there's, there's some growth, which we're building, so.
Which, if it's in the near future, this is where I feel like this needs to pause, because we need to figure out as a district, what do we need? I mean, we passed our levy, but we have plans with those dollars. And I'm really concerned, because if we talk about this, if I was an administrator over here, I'd be kind of frustrated, because my building's not being addressed. That's where I feel like we are where we are right now, but let's take a minute to pause and say, if there's different restructuring in the building, like sixth grade and below, that we need to do, that we need to figure this out organizationally as a whole district. Otherwise, we might put something here and then figure out, we really shouldn't have done this, it should have gone here, and I don't want to get to the point where we're riffing positions, because that really wasn't where the need was. And I, this is kind of a separate thing, but in this job description, it doesn't feel like we're offering as much if we were to use this, you know, agree on this position, not requiring them to be an administrator, but when I look at the salary and they're making decisions, like the discipline decisions, that's a concern for me, because that's a pretty big responsibility to be doing discipline, and for it to not be one of the requirements, just, I know that they would be under another administrator, but still, they're the ones that are making those decisions, and that's a pretty big deal if your kid's the one being disciplined. I think it's a higher level of responsibility. So that was a surprise to me when it said successful administrative or supervisory experience preferred. It feels like there's a lot of, you know, you're providing administrative leadership, that was the first thing that are essential function, and yet we're not requiring an administrative degree. So there was just some things here that just were questions for me on top of, I'm not really positive that the need is there, that I see.
Charlie, do you have any other?
No, I think it was all, just listening to everybody, it was all good conversation, I think we talked about what our needs are, and I think, I think the board's interested in learning exactly, not only Kyle, but what, what the needs are of, of just figuring it all with it. I like what, what Larry talked about, a manager, strategic needs, I, I don't think we need a manager, we don't need, that's the problem. Education, we, we get so, all we do is put out fires instead of really hope to think giving these administrators resources to be instructional leaders, or, or teachers, thereby the students, and, but I just think, I just think overall, this is something that, and I know it's not, it's not the exception to vote on, but it's, it's something that we all need to sit down and talk, and, and not be afraid to bring in the people that listen every day, and, and get their opinion. And I, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's, that's, work, but, but I think, I think we need to, I think we just, we need more information, and that's, that would help everybody, and then through the sharing of that information, so you could, you know, my people probably aren't going to agree on everything, but, but, but there is, there's a place you can lay in that, that gets us good for the, for the new year.
Mr. Martin, with, you know, the secondary moving toward the PBIS, how would you see the administrators you have now, dealing with something like that, or it's just going to be something else that's going to be.
And we've already started, we, we already started that, really good, we've had tier two and tier three, got some things we're on tier one, but we've started that process, and it had, had fallen power with the first, last, two months as far as just implementations, we're in the beginning stages of that. So that would just, it just kind of goes on with what we're doing as an administrative team already. As far as just one of the responsibilities.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll see what Mr. Kids talked about, things that are sort of coming onto their blades, and we'll move around and see what's going to happen.
I just think we need to not rush this. This is an, it's needed, it's needed, but it's an expensive position, and I think we need to take some time to make sure that this is, truly fits the needs of the district as a whole.
So, you'll give that to Mr. Hook there, Charlie, or you'll give it to us?
Well, he'll probably be, imagine he's going to be at the, you're at the strategic planning thing, aren't you? You gotta come, in a couple weeks, you can do that some presenting. I can't remember.
You talking to me?
Yes.
What, 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 what medium you talking about?
I'll talk to you later, we'll get it, we'll get it.
Are there strategic planning with your, with Lisa?
At time.
Is there anyone else further three, four about the boys volleyball club?
Thank you. Hopefully a little less intense than the topic here about boys volleyball club. So basically, the history here is that we, in the athletics department, we've always had a girls volleyball team, the athletic department is sponsored, we have not a boys volleyball. There's been some interest in, Mr. Eby is here, he's one of our staff members, and he's been an assistant coach on the girls side, and he came to me a little while back and kind of asked about how we could start. So it's a conversation at the district level, making sure we had all our bases covered as far as doing it the right way. So basically, he wrote a proposal, that you guys have seen, that we're, kind of the goal here is engage interests in our boys, to see if there's interest in boys volleyball. So rather than going full speed ahead with making that a varsity sport, we wanted to make it as a student activity, like the club, like many of our clubs here at the high school. And that's kind of where we had talked about, in the midst of our conversations, the Ohio High Volleyball Association approved boys volleyball as a, as a sport that they sanctioned. So that kind of adds a little bit to it, that we'd like to, like I said, gauge interest, started as a club a couple of times a week, more of like an interbureau model, where we're, our own students are practicing and playing against each other a couple of times a week. I would like to just monitor, you know, how that's going as far as our interest level, and then assess as we go, whether we move that to a club sport, and eventually possibly a school sponsor, support, no agency, so.
Have you explored, is there some interest now?
Yeah, so Mr. Eby has had meetings and talked to students, and they're itching to get ready and play some volleyball. He had about 44 people sign up, so that's, would be plenty to start, a couple of varsity JV team kind of thing. The issue, the, what we need to see is, are you just signing up, or are you coming to practice and play, things like that, so that's kind of where we need to, we need to monitor.
That's incredible, I mean, that's, that's awesome, thank you for doing that, because that's extra work, starting something new, but for there to be that interest there, that's a great opportunity. And it would be cool to have another sport that, you know, as an option for students to participate in, so thank you, that's great.
Will the season parallel, like the G-Walk season, or is it just going to kind of be year-round for the time being?
We haven't really talked, we talked about like getting started this spring, I mean, there wouldn't be any competition at, at that level, you know, the G-Walk, you know, it's just a volleyball, it's a spring sport, so they're going to be going as soon as we can. But then, if it becomes a little bit more, then we would provide more time to see where we can get it.
I guess where I've got it, is this going to impede the little, little, okay?
Because there are fall sports. Okay, so.
Also, this is part of the student activity in school club, so it's not technically a sport, so technically, fall, not to the fall at earth, the school, and all the other clubs we have, just like a table tennis club, just like an ultimate frisbee club, that we, administration kind of, we see that.
But it sounds like, a letter here that everybody except us, Springfield and G-Walk, and so, I mean, there would be a path, that if there was an interest, we sustain, that we'd have the opportunity then to.
Actually, Miami's, we found that out, we actually found that out recently, tried to have a team a couple of years, and hasn't.
Hasn't taken.
So there are five of our G-Walk students that are on the field.
3.5 Springfield, junior high electives program.
Thank you, Mr. Soke, members of the board, I have for you our summer program at junior high school, I have a program of studies this evening, you'll see a couple changes from last year to this year, with the addition of architectural design, that is one of our project leadway courses, instead will be taught by Mr. Bridges, that follows the curriculum cap of green architecture through project leadway program. You'll also see a studio art class and an intro to art that did not appear in last year's program. The studio art class is an advanced course for students who have taken a Level One art course, to hone in on their art skills. And the intro to art is a combination of what was the 2D and the 3D part. So those are the changes that we brought to you, this is less you. So are there any questions on the program studies for electives at the junior high?
Does any of this prepare, I mean, of course it prepares them, but these are, there's no high school classes here, like you can do Spanish one in eighth grade, and then it transfers over for one of your high school credits. So, I mean, there's a lot of really cool art things, is there anything that can transfer over for their high school credits, or are those totally separate?
Not the arts, but this year we did start offering physical science at the honors level in eighth grade, so we will have a group of roughly 70 youngsters coming into the high school with a science credit this year. So we've watched very closely how those students are doing, those eighth grade students that are in our ninth grade level honors physical science class, and they'll start high school biology in the honors level, correct? So we've been watching them very closely, and making sure that Mr. Relling, our new teacher, the junior high school, who's working for immense amount of hours, is doing a great job with that program.
That's amazing, reaching kids at all the different levels, and really giving them a head start on, on high school when they're ready, so that's awesome.
I think I do Spanish, French, physical science, algebra, geometry this time.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Griffin's gonna, please, I have Mrs. Griffin here with me tonight to, to assist me with the science adoption. We have not had a 1-5 science adoption since 2008, so we are well overdue. Part of the issue is that we have not found a product that is appropriate for, for us to spend the amount of money that it costs to adopt, so we've been waiting for a program to come along that is likely to amplify science programs. So it is based on the science of reading, it is research-based, backed by the Ohio Department of Education, developed by Lawrence Hall of Science, the University of California, Berkeley. We are really, really excited to bring more lab work in students acting as the role of a scientist or engineer, and a deep content dive into this program. So it is going to be, it's going to be a lot of work for our teachers to, to latch on to a new program, with so many different facets involved in it. We do have Mrs. Griffin who has been visiting classrooms, who has led the charge with this pilot this year. We also built another reading-based science program that had ours as well, but this one definitely out mine, so I'd like to sell it for, compare it with her.
Oh, that's fine. Really want to get the look and feel of science in today, and have our kids learning about science very early on, and getting them excited and engaged, and wanting them to be engineers or scientists of the future, because there's so many roles out there in career fields that engage with science, and actually, you know, tapping into that early on, as early as first grade, getting them just talking about it, you know, like that spark with this kids is really important, because studies out there show that science is just not being taught at those early age levels, and it's so important. This will be a new way of looking at teaching science, it's a, it's a do, talk, read, write, so the approach is different, so that's where we will, will look to provide that professional development, and really tap into learning all the facets of this program, so we can really try to teach, versus just giving a service, which is what we've been doing for quite some time. So we're really excited about it.
And we think that you overlap the informational text through the readings will also assist us with our, with our students' ability to decipher information.
So, piggyback up what Ms. Bass said earlier, does this mesh well with what they're going to do in sixth grade, is this, sixth or one through five?
This is one through five.
I guess this will kind of blend well with what they go do in, in SI then, or is it?
It does, however, we are, we are in the end of that option, so. So once we have this on board, this program does extend up through grade eight. So this will be a strong consideration for the six, eight adoption that will be coming your way. It's a initial, future, not this year, obviously.
So for the trainings, is it so different? I was just trying to read through the email of my questions. When you take over a new curriculum, it's a lot. So, yeah, it's a lot. So it says training will start full day from the company in August. Is that during our regular PD day? Or do we provide statements for the teachers to attend us? Or how does that happen?
It's during our PD day. However, from now until then, I plan to start pushing some information out. As well as the team members and our teachers who are on the team. They have been sharing materials and they implement this program with their team right now. So they've had a sense of looking at it, kind of getting a feel for it, alright. So they, they, you know, we'll just be diving further into that until we get the full PD come August. From there on out, we do have also one hour, three one-hour PDs that can be scheduled throughout the year. So that we can revisit and make sure that we're on track.
And I like the fact that you said they have a slideshow for the new teachers coming to the district that weren't there for all of that. To make sure, this is such a great curriculum, that they're able to teach it to the, to the core of what they really should be teaching it to and not just looking at the book. I am really not sure what to do with this. I, I mean, that's great, the things that you guys provided. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. I have more too. If you're interested in looking at the student books that you could ask about with your texts. There's five student readers per unit. So they will have, and they're eighteen per, per unit, per, so per kid. So they will have opportunity to share reading, care of reading, and also teach with reading apps, which is, you know, through the science of reading right now is huge. And that listening comprehension at that early age is completely outweighing, you know, their, their sound.
When we look at our standardized test, wasn't that an area that was lower of the, of when you're reading? Yeah, that's what I thought. So this is, I mean, it really, really goes well with addressing the needs within our district to make sure that we're preparing our students. So that's exciting. Thanks.
Just one more question, and this is pure curiosity.
Yeah.
I saw Mr. Balaj earlier. The shipping cost is twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay, we really tried to work out, do we work out the score? I was like, I will come and pick it up.
I'll pick it up.
I know, I know, but it's not local. So we did investigate that piece. We were trying as hard as we could for it to, to let the last test, you know, see it out. But yeah, they're not local. The kids are, there's sometimes two or three kids per unit. And for grades K through two, it's, it's three units. So if you can think about two units, so it's a lot of stuff. That excludes your instructional materials, your super holes, the student, you know, readers that come with each unit. So it's a lot and that's, that's why it's awesome.
Did you Google for like a free shipping code or something? I just, that jumped out and it's kind of eye-watering, but, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert, will you take over the rest of the meeting?
That's a whole place half member down, right? We've got so many items. Mr. Board President, members of the board, receiving three point seven. It's payment blew up. This is something that you do every year. This is for those students that had, had contractual transportation that we did not need. So therefore, they get payment blew up. That, that raises that, it's probably a hot part of education. So any questions regarding three point seven? Three point eight, this is, we've done an evaluation analysis of our roads in our district. We've got a pretty good idea on scaling and what we need to do. And so with that, we started prioritizing working needs. In this particular situation, it's the portion of the third grade group that we need to get repaired. This was a bid project. We had three bidders. In this case, Circle Ruining was the most responsible, responsive bidder with the project. And they had done multiple projects within the district as well, so very responsible, very quality-oriented. So with that, we request your approval on item three point eight as well. Any questions?
Is this for the, the expansion that we have to with their graders? It's just the original building?
Yeah, part of the, it's the original building and part of it is the modular. Yes. Yeah, and three point nine, this is, we purchased three school buses for this coming year. We are hoping that we can get these sometime possibly in September, most likely. They're still backwarded a little bit, so they're still working through the program. But we did utilize the Southwest Ohio State Department of Purchase, accounting pricing for these buses. We also were fortunate enough that we received a grant that we were able to put as part of this funding for these school buses. So part of it will be PI monies and part of it will be the grantings. So that's an available thing on our side as well. And so we also will be looking at trading in three buses that are of age and no longer open for the district. So three point nine will be asking for approval there for three new school buses for this coming school year. Any questions there? I have three point ten. This is actually an exciting thing. We put together a group of individuals and the group of individuals was building administrators from each building within the district, whether it was a principal or assistant principal that came to these meetings. And then also the SRO and air officer was involved as well in these meetings. And we had a couple of folks from central office sit in as well on a couple of presentations that we had. We had multiple vendors come in and provide us with opportunities to look at new video surveillance software and cameras and cable that we needed within our district. And I know that was a big focus of our permanent improvement levy, that we wanted to improve our security enhancements. This is a part of that. In talking to the group that we put together, one of the thoughts, and talking to the vendors as well, just because of the product that's out there and the availability right now and the lead times that are there. The thought process is, let's look at the software programming first. We wanted something that was scalable, that would fit the needs of the district, that would allow an administrator to easily and quickly review video if they need to do such. That was also something that was price-friendly favorable for us as a district. And something that we do, we can get scale and grow with. And so with that, the group evaluated, they looked at a front base approach where we could do the software. We will do some camera upgrades. We have about eighty-five analog cameras in our district that need to be upgraded to IP cameras. So we'll be doing that as well as part of this project. And then there'll be some cable involved. So we're looking at it, that right now is that first initial phase. We also will be looking at possibly adding some additional cameras. We're not quite there yet, but we see that possibly fitting in. So we may be coming back to you to add a few cameras in areas. The building administrators are now looking at that and seeing what areas they would like to cover or some changes in areas that they would like to cover. So we're in the process of doing that now. So with that, we bring a recommendation to work to Forward Edge. Forward Edge is our current technology provider in our district. They provide a very comprehensive presentation to us. The software, again, is very intuitive, it's very easy to use, and something that the administrators believe would fit their needs. So that's why we're bringing to you, seeing Forward Edge to recommend for our videos, for making software, cameras, and cable. Any questions?
So this is all buildings that we're upgrading, kind of just depending on?
The entire district, yes. We're just looking at making it very comprehensive.
You said, you're in a vibe, it's, it's worth growing.
Yeah, yeah, well, most of it was there, part of the process, and Aaron as well. Karen Mason was also there. So give us some great feedback. And then the item three point eleven, just a ADT security monitoring agreement. We put it on as actually a reveal, it's really a reactivation of this agreement. About the night of, in twenty-twenty, the board approved a security monitoring agreement with ADT. So things happened within that timeframe in which, for some reason, the monitoring process was discontinued. As part of the surface, there were some issues going on contractually that needed to be worked out. When I came on board in August, we started talking through those things collaboratively with ADT. Kara and I had a lot of conversations with ADT about a few things. And we finally have come now to a resolution on those items. Therefore, we're bringing it back to you this evening as a recommendation to approve. So that we can reactivate the security monitoring services in each of the buildings. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. Three point twelve, committee reports.
Board President, members of the board. I feel like I'm out in the right field here. We had our district parent council meeting earlier this month. Half the members are new to this meeting, so we discussed the epic awards coming up that DPC has a big hand in selecting. So that'd be one epic award recipient per building. So we discussed that. We discussed the nomination process, how that would be done, if there would be any changes, things like that. One, one thing that was implemented by the DPC that is new this year is that staff will have a chance to nominate those selected for epic awards. In the past, that was not the case, it was just parents and students. Now staff will be a part of it. So the previous next, or the, the next DPC meeting was previously scheduled for April sixth. We decided to push that back. It was too close to spring break. Parents want a little more time to get the nominations. So the deadline for the epic awards was decided to be April sixth. And then the, those will be selected at the next DPC meeting on April thirteenth. Any questions?
So we have our athletic council meeting. We have two, either one fall or the spring. This year, the agenda wasn't, there was a lot of controversial topics to discuss or anything like that. So it was kind of getting through some things, we didn't talk to all the coaches. But Career Health did sponsor this. They provided us, they had a nice grant for attendance. They talked about our partnership from an athletic standpoint and what their team doctors and athletic trainers can provide for us. So it was great meeting to, to have great, what we do and what they do to make sure our coaches understand the services that they provide. We also really loved it, our coaches, some of Mr. Gilbert's projects that will be doing this summer, that they provide obstruction for digging buildings and camps and things like that. So we were able to lay all of that out. So it was good. We talked about our SB awards, which we started two thousand twenty, unfortunately. So we had to turn out all of those online. We did announce all of our winners and things like that earlier. We unfortunately didn't do that again last year. So this is the third annual, first annual SBs that is going to take place at South Creek Church on May the sixteenth. My Kanter Athletic Council group that I work with, which is leaders from all of our teams, from our varsity teams. They are basically putting on the events under the leadership of our athletic department. So really cool for our kids to participate in that and we're excited to do that this year.
Thank you. Other business. Moving on to the space.
Yeah, I have two items for you to discuss today. The first item is the April twenty twenty-two financials. Detailed financial report is our voted on board knocks for a couple of few weeks. I'll hit on a couple of things though, just in the month of February. We did receive almost seven point eight million dollars in tax advantages for the general fund. So that was great to see those are start rolling in. And that's typical for this time of year. We've received six hundred and seventy thousand. That's the first allotment that we've received for our PI fund. So that money will be quickly utilized. We've received nine hundred and seven thousand in state funding for the month. So our total revenue was just over eight point seven million. In terms of expenses through February, our salaries and benefits are running as anticipated from the November forecast. We're actually extremely close on estimates. It might appear that we, you know, when you look at the financials on there, it might appear that we're running a little bit under. But that's because we have supplementals that are coming up in April and June and that are for the second line. So I'm not, I don't anticipate having to update those from May at all. Purchased services are running slightly under right now. That's mainly due to the lack of subs that we had at the beginning of the year for beautiful bid. So those numbers are a little bit lower. So I'll adjust that in the May forecast if our estimates continue to look like going on under. Supplies through February, we are going to be updating in the May forecast. We'll lower two hundred and sixty thousand for textbooks. That was part of the five-year textbook adoptions. We have four hundred thousand set aside per year. Since we're going to have that adoption from out of ESRO funds, with what she's already spent on other adoptions this year, she will be returning two hundred and sixty thousand to the general fund. So I'll be able to lower the May forecast for that. As well as I'll be moving a hundred and fifty thousand in cleaning supply costs to the new ESRO funds that we received for that four point two million that we just received from a couple of months ago. So I will be lowering the forecast at least four hundred and ten thousand. We're running pretty much on par for the rest of, for the rest of supplies. In terms of capital outlay, it kind of looks like we're running a little bit over. But that's because we had to charge the school bus leases as well as the modulators to the general fund until the PI money came in. Now that that start rolling in, I'm going to move those out. And then we'll be very much in line with our estimates within about twenty thousand. So we're looking good in the May forecast. That may be on par from the November forecast. There should be much change. So the cash flow at the end of February was just under eleven point five million, which is about seventy-two days of cash on hand. So we're running pretty, pretty well. So unless there's any questions, that's the first item we have to put on the separate.
Any concerns with fuel costs for the buses?
Yes, fuel costs have increased. We have several things that have increased, but luckily, there's been some decreases in other areas that has allowed us to maintain. Yes, I have had to increase the bus fuel line already.
What was our average? I don't know what's.
Well, it ranges, but around fifty thousand. So, but it has gone up. It was a little bit lower in earlier months, but it's definitely been higher the last several months. So we have just had to adjust. Scott and I had talked about that not too long ago. We've had to make some adjustments in that line. But like I said, we have had some savings in other areas, so we are still running within the estimates.
And to have motion to accept five calls on, no, no, I'm sorry, four.
So.
Second.
Now.
Yes.
Stuckey.
I'm staying.
Balaj.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
And a little quick, just a note before the launch, I forgot to say. Charles is, he dropped off. He sent me a message a couple of weeks ago. So I want to head him to him a little bit of those. And then my other item is just approval for a club donation of a thousand dollars from contemporary image labeling to the Wayne Kemper Award Scholarship Fund in the, for that general donation.
I just want to pick up a real quick, and then I recently have seen, we haven't had the athletic make would yet, have we? Have scholarships been given recently for the athletes?
It's still open right now.
It's open right now? So it must just be because it's the end of season. That's probably it, because it's the end of season. Because recently, I've seen a couple of students posting pictures with Wayne Kemper. And I thought, what a cool thing, what a legacy he has left in students that are still graduating. He was their coach. And they're bringing back that memory of the impact that they had. So I love it when I see donations going into his memorial scholarship fund, because he impacted so many students' athletic careers. It's pretty thorough. So just, just recently, I've seen that. So just thankful for the people that continue to donate to that fund.
Hold call.
Now.
Yes.
Stuckey.
Yes.
Balaj.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stuckey, members of the board. Just bringing to you the second reading of board policy on committees. Basically, in a nutshell, just a reminder, I'm sure, I did not hear any kind of changes from anybody in the first reading. But basically, what this is, is that any type of superintendent committee slash district committee, same thing. That if there are community members that are absent on the committee, we open it up. It's not video, it's open to the public. They can not participate, but they can witness and watch. At the end of the day, that's kind of, maybe else like this. That's kind of the general. So this will be a second reading.
Can I ask a question? And it might be in here, and I apologize if it is, but it just came to my head, so it's easier to ask. What if a community member videoed? Is that a lot? I know that Scott would be videoing. I know that Scott would be videoing. It's not necessarily. Okay, 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 thank you.
Yeah, it's not just video, just, it, it's, uh, recordings. It's broader than that, so it's, it's not just. Any, any sort of recording is not allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Sorry, Peter's not. Tab?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Five point two.
And this is the approval of Boys' Automotive Codes for our high school.
Is there a motion to accept five point two?
Second.
Second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Tab?
Yes.
Stiki?
I'm staying.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Assistant superintendent.
Could you give us your question numbers before I present to you, like, five points, just our march personnel report?
Do you?
No, no.
No, this one's.
It's a person, that.
Okay. The person, no, I'm sorry. Is there a motion to accept six point?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Tab?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good. Yes.
I have six point two as our fourth of March, and six point three is our eighth operation schedule, which we're already going to add lacrosse, uh, when the boys' girls soccer on.
Is there a motion to accept, uh, six point two or six point three?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to make a comment, that I think it's super cool to see our own students coming back and coaching our teams. I see a couple names here that I recognize, and I'm like, that is pretty awesome that they're coming back and we're rehiring those coaches, so super neat to see. That's all.
Yeah, there's a lot that we do that.
Yeah.
I think five of my staff are.
Really?
That's cool.
That's thoughtful.
All right. Roll call again.
Tab?
Yes.
Stiki?
Uh, Steve?
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Cooper?
Seeking approval of the architectural design, studio art, and intro to art force of the spring virgin high school, like the programs. As well as science adoption, grades one through five.
You always do so well with this segue.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Lisa?
Yes.
Tab?
Stiki?
Stiki?
Yes.
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 Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Get back up.
I'm back up. Item A, accepting, uh, requesting approval of the resolution to payment blew up for transportation. Uh, item eight point two, approval of contract with a circle roofing for a billion roof repairs at third grade elementary. Item eight point three, approval to purchase three seventy-two passenger buses utilizing Southwest Ohio Education Purchase Council bid pricing. Item eight point four, approval to purchase new video surveillance software and cameras from Forward Edge. Item eight point five, approval to renew, uh, reactivate the ADT security monitoring agreement.
Is there a motion to accept, uh, approval of eight point two, eight point five?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Tab?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Thanks for filling in the holes.
All right. Yeah.
All right. Nine point one, announcements and future considerations. Do you have any? Okay, uh, comments, Ms. Tab?
Uh, first thing I want to say is that as I think back about, you know, where we were in twenty twenty and over a two-year period, and when we're talking about the administrative positions, that do we increase? And I think about what they've been through over the last two years. And when we looked, when I looked at where our current assistant super, or assistant, um, principals are, I just reflect, and what an amazing job that they continue to do. They didn't look and say, we are getting paid this, and we came in an extra ten or fifteen or however many days. They just did what it took, and it just makes me appreciate what we have here, because they're gonna do what is best for our kids. So I was glad to see that on the agenda, um, because I do think it's something that was definitely worth looking back into and making sure that we're paying them for the time that is needed. I think they definitely use it wisely. They're not just here wasting time. Um, and I liked what Mr. Anderson, um, suggested about hearing from other people that are impacted, that, um, you know, we heard from Mr. Martin about the position, but that would be an interesting thing with, like, the administrators that are sitting at the table up here and anybody else that it would directly impact, um, to get feedback. So I thought that was a great recommendation from him, so, um, I would appreciate that also. Um, I wanted to share a piece. Um, Mr. Anderson and I are on the Career Centers Board, and, um, he just reported back at our last board meeting that our numbers are higher there than they've ever been. So we actually have nine satellites here at the high school, which is the highest in Warren County with satellites. Um, but we also have a good number of students that go up to the Career Center. So our numbers are higher than they've been since they're, since, you know, since our current superintendent there has been, has been there. So it's neat to see coming out of COVID, because last year we weren't sure what was gonna happen, and just to see the students taking advantage of all the amazing programs that are there for students that need something that looks a little bit different. So I just wanted to share out, we do have a lot of spring bro students going there. And, um, it's, they represent us well, and they're getting a great education. So last thing is just to have a safe spring break and, um, enjoy our time away, students and staff. That's it.
Great. So, uh, we spent a lot of money tonight, um, that's, that's for sure. But, um, you know, I think in all seriousness, um, you know, kind of going, again, feedback comes with bad. Looking back a few years, uh, when I joined the board, we couldn't have done what we did tonight, which is a bunch of much-needed repairs, some additional new buses, um, a relatively expensive set of, um, new materials for science that covers, you know, um, half the, half the grades. Um, and we even paid for shipping. Uh, but, you know, I, I think we, we're here because of a couple of things. One, first and foremost, the support of our community. Um, two, pass levies, uh, and pay for these things, because, you know, again, these are not cheap in isolation. And then when you start stacking them on top of each other, I mean, again, it's, it gets eye-watering how expensive this is. But, again, we can do that now. Um, the second reason we're here today is because of smart, disciplined fiscal leadership from Ms. Daisy. And that, that needs to be acknowledged too. I mean, we, we do pinch pennies where possible. We use creative thinking. You know, with our finances, you heard about how we're able to fit things in with Estor funds. Um, again, that all adds up to get us to the point where we can afford these things without immediately thinking, well, we're gonna cut or not do, or, you know, these kind of King Solomon-type decisions where we've got to figure out what we're gonna sacrifice in order to do something else. So what a journey it's been, but man, it is great to be here because, um, it's been a long time coming. So thank you for stacking all these things up, and thank you for finding what's best for our students. Um, but it's, it, it's great to be able to say yes to all this stuff and not, you know, lose it tonight, and not get it reported, so, well done.
Very well said. Yeah, Mr. Gibbs, I don't, I don't have really anything to add, I'm just, uh, back up with it. Everybody has a, a safe, relaxing spring break, enjoy a little bit of time away.
All right, um, just wanna say good luck to the spring athletics that are in full swing now. Uh, had a pretty good winter season. Want to thank the board for the discussion on the, uh, Dino students, some good points there. And, you know, sort of regardless of, you know, what happens here, you know, you need to look and agree to look at the lower levels, uh, you need help there. Once again, you know, thank you to all of you guys for the work that you do and put in. Enjoy your spring break, see you when we get back. Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Tab?
Yes.
Stiki?
Yes.
Balaji?
Yes.
Good.